If you will, join me in a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Please join me with a pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council members, we have a special person with us tonight among many special people. Pam Russell will be joining the Human Resource Department on Monday as the Assistant Human Resources Director, reporting to Glenn Godwin. Pam is a resident of the city of Murfreesboro. She's originally from Ohio. She most recently worked as Human Resource Manager for Haru Holdings, a subsidiary of Nissan. She has 12 years Human Resources Management experience and has completed her bachelor's degree at Trevecca Nazarene College in both management and human relations. She is a military veteran, having served in our United States Army. She's currently Vice President of Programs at the Stones River Chapter of the Society for Human Resources Management, and she lives in Murfreesboro with her husband and son. We're excited to have Pam join the team, and we welcome you Pam, and expect great things from you, as I know you have provided wherever you have been. Thanks very much for being with us tonight, and congratulations Glenn. Very good. We look forward to working with you. Thank you so much. All right. Let's see, council members, you have before you your consent agenda. If you've had an opportunity to review that, are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? And if not, is there a motion that we accept the consent agenda as it is provided?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Geely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You also have the minutes of the May 19th special meeting before you. If you've had an opportunity to review that, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the special meeting held on May the 19th?
Move to be approved. Second.
Have a motion in second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Geely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You also have, let's see, to consider for passage on second reading, the tax rate ordinance.
So moved.
Second. A motion in second to pass on second reading, the tax rate ordinance. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Geely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, what I would ask that we do is to consider for adoption, the resolution regarding procedures to be used in the 2010 reduction in force, and that is Agenda Item Number 12, which is on your second page. As we are going to consider amending the appropriations ordinance, and then consider it for passage on second reading, it might be good to go ahead and consider this procedure for the reduction in force before we consider the amended appropriations ordinance. Ms. McGannon, would you do that?
I would, Mayor. What this does is implement the action that you took at your last meeting when you approved the recommendations in the letter from the city manager about how the layoff reduction in force policy would be implemented by expanding the ability of the city manager to vary city policy to allow the possibility of transfers to be considered before persons were selected for reduction in force by ensuring that any person so selected would have at least two weeks' notice from the time they were notified they were selected for reduction in force before they would have their job terminate, even if implementing the transfer and the two-week notice meant that they might be employed beyond the July 1st date that would be the start of the new budget year. It also makes clear that should that happen for some period of time, that those employees would not, by being employed on July 1, be eligible for longevity pay or the $750 bonus. It also makes clear what had been contained in his letter, that if someone applies for a transfer, is selected for a transfer, but did not work out in the probationary year in the transferred position for reasons which would not justify a disciplinary termination, that they would be entitled to receiving the same severance package as if they had been selected for the reduction in force. And it has a catch-all provision, giving the city manager the ability to vary from the employee handbook policies which represent the city council's actions as necessary to implement the goals that you have set for accomplishing the reduction in force in a fair, compassionate, and non-discriminatory way, but says that if, for any reason, it would take beyond August 1st to accomplish that reduction and some change in city policy, that that would be reported to the council. So it's in a more formal way, acting upon the recommendations that were made to you at your prior meeting and which staff has already undertaken to implement. Be happy to answer any questions about any of the provisions.
Questions for Ms. McGannon. If there are no questions, you have this resolution regarding procedures to be used in 2010 reduction in force before you. Are there any questions, comments, or is there a motion?
Excuse me, Mayor, I should point out one thing. I found after your packet went out that there was a typo in Section 7, and so a revised original was placed on your tables tonight, substituting one word. It doesn't change the substance of the resolution.
Such modification made?
Yes, it was substituting the word "made" for the word "first."
No questions, Mayor. Move for adoption of the resolution.
I'm going second it, but now I'll tell you what, it's a difficult situation to deal with. It's really difficult. But now, you know, being in the business world like I am, with my company and looking at stuff in government magazine, and this is something going on all over the country, even in Wilson County, City of Lebanon. I don't like it. But this is reality. So I'm going to second the motion and... and move on.
All right, you have a motion in seconds. Any question on the motion?
Mayor, this just gives us an opportunity to let those jobs, if possible, be filled from positions within the city. That's what we're looking at, at this as well. So hopefully that we can have some positions that may be transferred from one apartment to the other, and those reductions won't be as severe as we initially thought they would be. That's what this gives us, an opportunity to do that.
Right. Find out if we can be successful in doing it. And it's up to the employees if they'd like to participate, advantage of it, or some employees may choose not to. Other questions, comments? If not, please call the roll on this resolution.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Geely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington. Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider amending the appropriations ordinance. Ms. Wright, will you go through that with us, please?
Sure. There was a memo in your packet regarding a small error. $14,481 was shown as other sources on the airport chart of our Exhibit A to our ordinance resolution, our ordinance appropriations, and it should have been from fund balance. It's just categorized in the wrong place, and so we need that to be corrected before you pass this on second reading.
All right, is there a motion that we make this correction?
So moved. Second.
All right, then the appropriations ordinance, which is the budget, and the way our money will be spent, will be amended under this motion in second. Are there any questions?
Just didn't add or just didn't change any numbers, it just moves it from one category to the other.
It's just saying somebody is coming from their fund balance.
All right, you have a motion in second. Any further questions? If not, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Geely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Now we'll consider for passage on second reading, as amended, an ordinance, the appropriations ordinance. This is our city's budget and the way our money will be spent. We call it a budget, but the ordinance, obviously, that puts that budget into place is called the appropriations ordinance. Is there a motion that we approve the appropriations ordinance on second read?
So moved.
I like that.
I'll second that, then.
All right, we have a motion in second.
Ms. Harris, a reason.
Ms. Harris.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As I stated before last week, my dad always said, you know, if you can't have the whole loaf, sell for half. Governing is all about debating and researching different views and coming together to do what's best for all of the citizens of Murfreesboro. I'd like to thank Rob and your staff for a job very well done on the budget, the council members, and Mayor for your understanding of me and having patience with me and willing to work with me, and for all of the citizens of Murfreesboro for all your support. Tonight, I am going to vote to pass the budget, but I hope that we continue to monitor very closely any unnecessary spending and all monies coming in. Because all of us want to avoid increased taxes, we want to avoid further layoffs. This has been a very, very difficult situation for me. I have prayed long and hard about this. I've actually fasted over this situation, and it's difficult for me because it's been difficult for me to grasp my hands around everything that's going on in these tough times. I didn't have the luxury of coming on the council when the economy was great, so I'm learning. This has been a very interesting learning curve for me, and I am going to delve into the budget more so I can understand where our monies go and how they come in, so I'll be further brist on that. But I feel like we have accomplished a lot. We were able to give $750 to our employees. We were able to go from two months with the people that are having to be laid off to three months. We're able to extend the health insurance from two months to three months. And I just want the people to know that, here again, I appreciate your patience, and I'm praying, I know we all are praying for the people that are having to be laid off, and I just want to thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. You have a motion in second. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the passage of the amended appropriations ordinance? Ms. Harris, I think all of the council is proud of you too. You got a lot of votes, you have a lot of confidence on behalf of many people, you support many people, and they support you. And I know you look with pride on your position, just like we do. And it wasn't easy, and you're scared to death your first month or two or three months, but it is tough coming in at bad times. It wasn't real easy coming in at a good time, but it's really not easy coming in at a bad time.
Yeah, I want to just keep my word, listen to our citizens speak up and follow through, and it's been interesting six weeks.
Well, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
You're doing a wonderful job.
Group decisions are always better than individual decisions, remember that. So, you have it for passage, a motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Geely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time pursuant to a resolution adopted by city council on May 13, 2010, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately three acres along Franklin Road and Moreland Lane from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District to commercial fringe, CF District. Family Worship Center is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 30, 2010 issue of a local newspaper. Welcome, Ms. Geely.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. Good evening, council members. The first public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning approximately 3.25 acres, located just south of Highway 96 of Franklin Road and just east of Moreland Lane, from its current single-family residential zone, RS 15, to CF, Commercial Fringe District. The properties to the west of the study area, just across Moreland Lane, are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County, are currently zoned RS 15, developed as a single-family subdivision. Moreland Lane, at this very moment, is under construction, and it's being improved as a city project and will continue as part of Veterans Parkway. So if you've driven out there, then you've seen lots of big equipment working in that area, and that's what's happening to Moreland Lane. To the east of the study area is vacant land and it's zoned RS 15. To the north, directly across Franklin Road, are six parcels, which currently have an application pending to be annexed and zoned CH into the city of Murfreesboro. You will consider that item next month, not tonight. On the opposite corner, on the northwestern corner of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road, are four parcels zoned CF, Commercial Fringe District. The property owned by Family Worship Center, which a portion of that property is the subject item tonight, has been granted an institutional group use specialties permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals to build a church on the property. They've also gotten approval from the Planning Commission for a site plan. As a part of that site plan approval, they reserved an area of land to the north, along the north side of their property, to potentially sell it as an out parcel in the future, maybe as a commercial out parcel. That reserved portion of land is what's before you this evening. It's that 3.25 acres that's shaded orange in the map that's been included in your Agenda Materials. The Blackman Community Land Use Plan does call for a commercial node at this location, the area shaded orange. As a matter of fact, the Land Use Plan recommends that this area, located, this intersection, this corner, develop first or be encouraged to develop before the properties on the northern corners. The Planning Commission did recommend rezoning these properties from RS 15 to CF, and the vote was unanimous. Mr. Dan Hillier is here this evening as a representative of the church. He doesn't have a presentation, but he'd be glad to answer questions that you may have anytime that you may have them. The city council should conduct a public hearing before making a recommendation on the matter, and staff is available to answer questions anytime you may have them. I do have an aerial photograph, and it's up on the screen now. I think, if you're familiar with the site, I've outlined the area requesting the commercial zone in orange, so you can see what it looks like from the helicopter.
So the church anticipates a retention or a detention area behind this particular parcel, is that correct?
Just south of it, that's right.
And then their entrance would be off the new, improved?
Veterans Parkway.
Veterans Parkway.
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions for Ms. Geely? Before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning along Franklin Road and Moreland Lane, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading, an ordinance to rezone an area along Franklin Road to Commercial Fringe, CF District.
Move for passage on first reading?
Second. Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Geely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time pursuant to a resolution adopted by city council on May 13, 2010, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 51.9 acres along Franklin Road and south of Braxton Bragg Drive from a planned unit development, PUD District, to a planned residential development, PRD District. Polte Homes and Leon Peoples are the applicants. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 30, 2010 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Geely.
Thank you again. This next public hearing is to consider rezoning approximately 51.9 acres of a portion of the Hillwood Development, which is shaded orange on the maps included in your Agenda Materials. The area colored orange is a part of the Hillwood Development, is currently zoned PUD, Planned Unit District. The area that hatched, which is the northern half of this development, is the subject area that's requesting a rezoning. Essentially, the request is to remove that hatched area from the Hillwood PUD and add it to the Blackman Farms PRD on the adjacent western side. So the area shaded blue is the Blackman Farms community in that zone PRD. So the request is to remove that section from Hillwood and add it to Blackman Farms, so essentially, it would be a part, or it would certainly be a part of the same development. The current PUD plan calls for single-family lots in this area, for 219 single-family lots. The change will not affect the maximum number of single-family units in the area. The same that are approved now would continue to be approved, so 219 units. The area to the north, east, and south is in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. It's zoned, most of it is zoned RS 15. That's actually the litigation area. You may remember, we passed an annexation amendment several years back. And of course, adjacent to the property on the western side is Blackman Farms. The site has been designed, and you can tell from your program books, which have been included in your Agenda Materials, that to accommodate our stormwater quality ordinance, there's a significant portion of green space in the center of the site, about 4.5 acres, which has been reserved, and it will actually be able to function as both a way to improve water quality and a recreation area for residents. If this were approved and it did become a part of the Blackman Farm community, then it would, the properties would also become a part of the Homeowners Association, and the Homeowners Association would be responsible for maintaining that open area. Mr. Randy Caldwell is here this evening, and he'd like to present this item to you. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning request unanimously the night of the public hearing, and staff will be available for questions anytime you have them, but I'd like to invite Mr. Caldwell to the microphone at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith, and just want to make you aware, I've also got Matthew Scribner with Polte Homes here with me tonight, and will be available to answer any questions that you might have after my presentation or after the public hearing. Again, you know, Margaret Ann's done a very good job of explaining what our request is, again, basically to take a part of the Hillwood Development and incorporate it and add it into the Blackman Farm community. Got a couple just slides to present you. This is an aerial that's got a little bit of age, but not too much. It basically shows you how Blackman Farms has built out up to this point. It's probably a little bit further along the area that we are adding as the large green area to the east of that, if north is to the top of the page. And you see the apartment community that's basically to the south that is part of the Hillwood Development, is basically, I think, fairly well completed at this point. The Blackman Farm development, this is basically a copy of the originally approved master plan for Blackman Farm. It contains 450 units on 133 acres. Average lot size in that area, again, it's a mix of some alley-loaded products and single-family products, average lot size are probably 6,400 square foot on those lots. Again, adding the Hillwood portion of development, you can see how the new layout basically incorporates into the existing Blackman Farms. A couple things that we had to change to the existing approved PUD will result in upon the product and some changes in the ordinance. Basically, you know, the Blackman Farm, existing Blackman Farm, has basically a garage setback of 20 foot. As many of you are aware, that's been a big concern with the community, so the building has been pushed back with a garage setback of 35 foot so that you can get two cars stacking distance in there, so it has added some depth to the lots there. As well, we took the originally approved plan, it was approved prior to some modifications to your stormwater ordinance, so we've had to basically reorganize the street patterns and the lot development in order to get a large, pretty large area to accommodate the stormwater that would be transgressing through the development. So those are primarily changes. Basically, what has happened as a result of that, and this is a little bit of a blow up of the area, we've been able to create a four-and-a-half acre Central Park area within the development, so we've kind of amassed most of the open space in that area to make it a passive recreation area as well. These lots, on average, again, because of the increase in the depth to accommodate the additional parking in the front, and they also wanted a little bit more additional depth in their backyards for their product, resulted in about 1,000 square foot, square foot of additional lot area. So the average lot size in this portion of the Blackman Farm is 7,400 square foot compared to the 6,400 square foot of the original Blackman Farm area there. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions. Matthew is here as well. This is the same product, same building, housing units that are in Blackman Farms, no different, same CCRs that will be enforced in there. This has really been one of the more successful developments in this down economy in all of middle Tennessee. I've seen statistics that show the sales record of this development, so this is, you know, in difficult times, has been a very successful community all over middle Tennessee. So again, thank you for the opportunity to address you, and I'll be available to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor?
I still have a few questions, Mr. Caldwell. You were mentioning about the stacking ability in the driveways. Is he going to be able to have two cars or four cars?
Actually, four cars, because that's a, you know, it's a two-car garage, so you'll actually be able to have four cars. So some of that parking that you're seeing in the street will be mitigated with this additional setback of the garages there now.
Now, some of the changes, I think, and I may be wrong in reading this from the existing Hillwood Development, is the amount of brick, is that correct?
No, it's the same.
Is that the same?
The same, I believe, from, yeah, it's going to be the same as if it had.
What has changed, the current PUD has some specifications, and the current PUD requires 75% masonry on the entire house product. Blackman Farms only requires 20% brick on the fronts of the houses. So since this is becoming a part of Blackman Farms, that will change, the requirements will change from being 75% masonry to only having 20% brick on the fronts of the house only, so that's going from PUD to PRD.
Right, so that would be a change.
That would be a change in the current approved plan, but not a change from Blackman Farms.
Right, right. That's what I'm talking about, from the Hillwood Development to the Blackman Farms Development, that would be actually a change from 75 to 20%.
That's right.
On the front only.
Well, typically, that's the only part that will have it, so 20% would be it on the front, so. And also, I think it shows, I was looking along the rear of these properties that face the existing county lots, looks like the proposed buffer on the old section was 25 feet, and then on this new section would be 30 feet, is that correct? feet, and then on this new section would be 30 feet, is that correct?
It's the same or a little bit more, you know. We maintain the integrity of the original PUD.
I'm just going by this, this plaque here, it shows 25 foot on this, where the red hash mark is, the old section, it shows 30 feet on the other side, with plating along the backs.
Yes, with plating along the back, yes, sir.
Other questions? Give us a little bit of a flavor of what Hillwood PRD had intended, if you will.
What the original plan had, and I do not have it, basically, Mayor, I'll pull up the, well, if they would pull up the original one. If you see that red line to the left right there? There was basically where those lots were right there, there was a, basically, a detention facility in that location that was back where the lots were backed up to. And I'm going to say it was probably maybe 100 foot wide, not knowing exactly, having the scaled plan here in front of me. And then we did have a central open space within the development. Because of the stormwater management changes, the area that we had allocated for that, maybe other than the old ordinance, was not large enough to accommodate that. So, when we got the topo in and started engineering this a little bit more, we found we needed a bigger area because of that criteria change. So, the perimeter really hasn't changed a whole lot as it backs up, you know, to those existing developments. We just had to change the road network internally in there to create that large central park space. We, I mean, we feel very much it's an improvement to the plan, because we basically have been able to incorporate a four-and-a-half acre park internally to the development where it did not have that before. So, there's a lot of value added for some of those lots running there, plus a much more usable, I think, amenity for the development compared to what we had before. If that makes any sense in my description.
Mr. McFarland?
Mr. Caldwell, as always, do a great job. My concern, in having discussed this with the planning staff, I think that, you know, we're in a position to aid recovery in the economy and help, you know, with some of the changes in our planned developments. The thing that concerns me is that as we have these developments come through and we use common sense to say, "Yeah, we can do this and we can't do that," I feel like that when we're taking a PRD that has already come through, 75% entire masonry on the entire building, and we're going to basically say, "No, we're going to cut that to 20% on the front," which really, on these houses, you would be looking at, say, a 35 or 40-foot wide house, that some are one-story, some are two-story, you're really talking maybe 150 square feet, 200 square feet of brick on the front of the house. I think that may be a little too much, going from 75, 75% all masonry to 20% front brick. I just think we have, as a council, have to be careful what precedent that we set on how we change these PRDs. And I'm all for helping make recovery faster, but at the same time, I think we have to be careful on how we do that with the changes we make on these PRDs. Because I mean, I remember when Blackman Farms came through, and we were in Ring 218, and we had the drive-through that we were shown with a video, and, you know, we're going from 75% masonry to 20% brick and 80% all vinyl. So, I just think we have a precedent that we're going to set, so it's a tough decision.
I can appreciate your comment on that, that we do have a development. I think that it's going to be consistent with what's there right now, and certainly, I think you know what you're getting, actually, with what you've seen out there. So, Polte brings a pretty good track record to the city of Murfreesboro related to what they do out there, so.
When Blackman Farms came through in '04, there was a tiny area in the back of Blackman Farms where you had maybe eight or 10 lots that bordered existing homes that were already there. This acreage is a little different, because it borders existing homes on two sides out of the entire development. So, we probably have 40 homes or 50 homes that, that's my concern, that they're in the county, but they were told that it's going to be 75% brick, and we're going to make a pretty significant change. So, that's just something I'm wrestling with right now.
I can appreciate that.
So, all of the existing Blackman Farms now are only 20% on the front?
I see that, did you get more information for that?
So, that's what it says here.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council. It will be the exact same product that we have in the current Blackman Farm. And Shane, I think, just to correct, I mean, make sure that I was hearing you right, we're basically taking the exact same product from Blackman Farm and continuing it in. And as far as the county residents, we will have that buffer if there was any concern, and hopefully it will help that concern.
Is there any, I see, I see you did, according to this plaque, you've increased it from, I would assume would be what with the Blackman Farms development was a 25-foot buffer, you've increased that, looks like a 30-foot buffer with evergreen trees. Is there, do you have any fencing, do you know if there's any existing fencing around any of this old product? I know there's some old tree lines.
There's some old tree lines. I can't remember if there's a farm fence in there or not. I know that there must be, because that was a dairy farm. So, if there's not a fence there, the cows would have been getting in the backyards. And our intent would certainly be to keep those existing trees that are there today.
Other questions before I open the public hearing?
Mayor, I know, I just got one question. I noticed that we'll probably hear some comments, but I know that we've opened up some, some of these streets, I know two of these streets are dead-end streets come on the county. I know we're going to extend those out into existing county roads that are, obviously from the city roads. I don't know, I guess that's, we'll see how that works out. I know we have the one that's existing now to the left-hand side, but we're opening up two more. I think that's correct. Did it crack, was that locked?
This is already open here.
This one, well, this one exists here. This one's already open, but these two are not.
Yeah, we have three accesses.
But only one is open today.
One is open today.
The two, two additional ones will be coming at this, with this plan.
Right. Well, actually, three, right.
All right, any other questions before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning along Franklin Road and south of Braxton Bragg Drive, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Sarah Kent. I'm at 3516 Blaze Drive in the Blackman Farms. My biggest concern is to the homeowners in Blackman Farms. We initially bought our homes with the auspices and regulations from the builders, there's two builders in there, with regulations. The regulations are in favor of the builder, and the homeowners do not have equal representation on the board. Unfortunately, there is not consistent follow-through in the regulations. Unfortunately, there's not adherence to these regulations that are enforced predominantly by the builder. And if Blackman Farms was to be part of this bigger program, then that means the homeowners do not have a voice for, until they completely build out and leave this whole new subdivision. I assume it will be at least another two years if the economy goes down, maybe another Purely, the regulations are builder-sided, and I just feel it would be incomprehensible to live with this for another four or five years without the homeowners having control of their own little association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'm one that has more than 20% brick.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir. My name is Sean Adams. I reside at 227 Elderberry Way in the Blackman Farm subdivision. I, too, have the same concerns as the previous speaker, my fellow resident in Blackman Farm. In addition to that, we have drainage issues in the current development that the builder refuses to address. Along their new addition, along Elderberry Way, they want to add in that new subdivision, those homes, when we had that hard rain a month or so ago, those homes had three to four feet of water in the back of those homes, in the backyard. There are drains in some of the backyards of the homes on Elderberry. It needs to be addressed. In addition to the drainage issues, there will be traffic issues right now in Elderberry Way, on Elderberry and also on Blaze Drive. The increased traffic flow that this new development is going to bring down those streets are going to be enormous. Right now, I have small children, and we need the builder to address some issues with the neighbors prior to your approving this new development or annexation into our development. We've asked the builder for a meeting, a homeowner's meeting, so they can address some of these issues, and they refuse to come to the table with us. So, we wanted to bring that concern to the council. Thank you.
Others wishing to speak?
Mayor, councilman, thanks for allowing me this time. And I'm another Blackman Farm homeowner with issues with Syn-tax Polte. My issues are similar to these folks.
We have your name and address.
John, excuse me, John Sanders, 3248 Blaze Drive, my apologies.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I should have told you.
Go ahead.
This is my first time for something like this, and it had to be pretty important for me to be up here. I've met personally with Syn-tax Polte, Matt being one of them, and one of his people that he works with, and the Blackman Farms Homeowners Association lawyer. Basically, Syn-tax Polte runs Blackman Farms. And they said, as far as board members, we don't have any. We had an architectural review board member, but Syn-tax Polte had all the votes, so whatever they decide happens. I basically have been told by one of the employees of Syn-tax Polte that they're going to run it until they get through building the whole thing out. And that wasn't Matt that said that, you know. I said, "Okay," then pretty much, we're tenants instead of homeowners, and I've got a lot of signed papers from homeowners feeling like they are tenants. And I know this meeting is about, you know, getting more houses built and everything, and maybe this homeowner issue should be hashed out with my mom, but you're the last guys that we can come to, you know. I went to your engineering department and I asked for a permit for the fence up in the young lady in back, Shannon. She said, "You know, we'll look at this and look at your restrictions and everything." And I signed the covenants, and yes, I have them here, okay? And I read them. So, she come out, and we was going to put my fence up. Well, basically, I fenced my patio in. Well, if you read the covenants, if you put a fence up, there's an area in there for variations for situations like I have. So, I told her, "Don't worry about it, just forget it, you know, this is the best we can do." She was nice enough, I don't know why she did, but she was so nice. She sent her engineer back out, and basically, the only homeowner that was on the architectural board review and her person, her engineer, basically laid my fence out and said, "Oh, you know, this is about the best we can do," which was better than we started out. Well, when I turned it in for approval, keeping in mind, we as homeowners don't have really a vote on it, it's strictly Syn-tax Polte, and if you think about it, our whole development was about built out. We didn't know this was coming about to have more houses. So, you know, here we are, still controlled by Syn-tax Polte. Gentlemen, you know, I've owned property all over Murfreesboro, been here 40 years. I've never been in a situation that I'm in now. And we're asking for ear from somebody to take a real close look at both sides of this issue. If you have any doubt about it, you can come to my neighborhood, drive through it, and people will actually flog you. You know, Gertner is the homeowners' management company, and they drive through issuing threats of $100 fines, and I've got a threat of $100 fine now, you know. And we had one issue with a person's flowers being too tall, and one of the Syn-tax people that spent a while back was in the car, said, "You need to write a letter," told the Gertner person, "You need to write a letter, the flowers too tall." Guys, we don't need this in Murfreesboro. I don't think that anybody sitting on this council tonight would want this kind of thing going on in their neighborhood. All we want, we do want homeowners association, we want a good firm homeowners association, but we want to be part of the homeowners association we're paying for. And I would like consideration from some of the council members or somebody as to how that we can handle this and get some control over what's going on. I'm not saying that, but I think Syn-tax Polte, as long as they're building, should have a say in that community, just like we do. Yes, they have a big investment. But now, there's close to 400 homes in there, I think we all have a bigger investment. But right now, the way that homeowners association was written, it's locked in, they just do whatever they want to do. And that's about all I got to say about it. But I got proof here, since I moved into my house four years ago, there've been three different fences that you could put up. And I was told by Syn-tax Polte, "We seldom ever, never change these covenants." Yes, they do, they change them when they want to. I can show you right here, probably. So, that's my say tonight. I'll probably be putting a for sale sign up, and I'm sure they'll like it, because I've got a couple of signs in my yard right now, telling people they need to be reading these HOAs before they sign them. But, you know, that's the way I feel about it. And I really did enjoy my home, hadn't had a whole lot of trouble out of it. But this is a major concern of not only me, but quite a number of people that live there. This community, when Polte's gone, we're still going to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Michael Castlet.
Please remove your hat, would you? Thank you, and give your name and address.
Michael Castlet, 535 Creek Oak Drive. I guess my concern is mainly the overcrowding of our schools in that situation. Syn-tax Polte, I'm very nervous, I'm sorry. They sell to mostly young families, such as myself, with, you know, young children. We all go to Blackman Elementary, Middle School, High School, so on and so forth. The selling point of the property is, you know, it's accessible to a lot of different things. Now, I believe their plan is to just build and get out like everybody else was saying, and it's going to leave the homeowners in that area, one, competing for the next two, three, four, five years against our builder, most of us losing property value since they priced the sale. You know, it's kind of like, when I bought my home, excuse me, it kind of explains to me it's inventory like a new car, you know, you just kind of got to get rid of it end of the year, wholesale, houses, so forth. So, a lot of people who have bought their homes went to Blackman Farms, I'm so nervous. First started developing, they brought them, you know, at a premium, and now they're, you know, the way things have gone, there's no, you know, it's cheap as we can get it now, just build it, sell it, move on, build it, sell it, move on until we're done, get out, leave people with, you know, a big mess almost. They have done nothing to increase, help increase the property value of Blackman Farms. Oh, my gosh, not a good public speaker. And so, a lot of my neighbor's concerns is our property value and what they're selling it for, and what we bought it for, and how long we're going to have to compete with our home builders sell our homes. You know, he's got to sell his home pretty soon, because it's just, it's a good place to live, only, I mean, I'm looking at the screen, and I don't know what this big park is, but they promised us a whole acre for our kids to play when we first came in. And now, it's not even accessible. And now, it's not even accessible to a road, you have to go through an alleyway, it's filled with weeds now, because, I mean, they just planted this in, I mean, you have to go drive through it, they planted it over the winter time, so, you know, Bermuda grass was not grown there. And, you know, it's more or less, how's it going to increase the value of Murfreesboro, Blackman Farms, the whole surrounding area with our schools, overcrowding? That's my, I mean, if you are going to, as long as the houses are similar, you know, it's not going to be a whole new subdivision where it's going to be luscious and gorgeous, and, you know, here's Blackman Farms, and here's the new Blackman Farms, you know? I mean, if it's going to be the same, and they're going to do something for the area to improve our property value, to help us homeowners, existing homeowners, to sell our homes, rather than having to compete with them until, you know, they finish building? And that's my only concern. I think that's a lot of people's concerns who live in there and surrounding areas, because what we bought our homes for and what they're selling for now is just, and then when they're done, you know, we need something to assure Murfreesboro residents all around the surrounding Blackman area that our property value is not going to just decrease and keep going down because Pol-T, Syn-tax, whoever's going to build this, you know, is going to do something to help that area. That's my main concern, is, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we will consider, on first reading, an ordinance to rezone an area along Franklin Road and south of Braxton Bragg Drive to a planned residential development, PRD District. Vice Mayor.
I'd like to, you know, I don't know what the percentage of this rate would be, but I'm not, Councilman Farland is, I'm not really comfortable with this, with this 20%. I mean, that's a big drop from, I think, from 75 to 20. And I'm really uncomfortable with, I understand how this process works, of course, when you develop the subdivision, I know the builder stays in control of what's going on until there's a certain percentage of that community built out, because they typically have the most interest or the most money and the most things going involved in that community, and they want to be able to control it. I understand how that works. I do understand that concerns me that there are some folks in the community that are not very happy with what's going on out there. And I would like to see, whatever we do tonight, before this gets to third reading or whatever, we could have assurance that there are some meetings going on that would talk about drainages, talk about different things that are concerning these homeowners, and get them some input into the documentary. Don't mean they're going to get everything they want, but it means at least they have an ear to talk to and a forum to say it at, but, you know, firstly, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the 75% brick stay. Now, that may not, that may be asking too much, or whatever, but that's just my feeling, and if we do that, we can go that way, so.
Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, Mayor. Along the lines of the comments of Vice Mayor Bradshaw, I would like to point out, I realize that generally as a development builds out, you start out with the homeowners association being the bulk of the membership of the organization being with the developer, and then it gradually gets transferred over to the actual vested homeowners in the area. And I assume that's probably how things were set up with the original Blackman Farms in this situation, for it to some point be transferred over, I'm guessing. The problem, I think, that the residents here have is the fact that they are probably close to that happening, or should be, with the original development, but if we merge this one into it, they're afraid they're going to have to start all over again until the next section of it builds out. I would like to suggest that perhaps there be, set up into the form of two HOAs, one that's for the original Blackman Farms, and then another one for this section, they can have the same requirements and so forth, but then that would solve the problem, I think, that the residents have about thinking we're almost to the point of, this is our neighborhood and being turned over for us to make decisions on, and that being taken away from them. The other issue that I want to talk about is the four and a half acre passive recreational area, which I think is how it was referred to, makes me think about, on the old TV show Sanford and Son, his junk dealership he referred to as domestic commodities, and sometimes a passive recreation is another way of saying a big open field. And that's great if it's going to be able to be utilized by the neighbors in the area, but if there's small parks out there now that aren't being, that keeps not going on, I can see if it's four and a half acres worth being in the middle of it, if that's not constantly maintained and cared for, it's going to be an eyesore for the residents as opposed to an amenity. And I applaud and understand the fact that you're wanting to make an amenity out of it and concentrate in that area, but I think we need some real assurance that that's going to be closely watched and maintained. But I do think the separate HOA is probably the most fair and equitable thing to do for the neighbors who are already out there.
Let's don't do that right now, if you don't mind. Let's get some other comments. You can be seated. We're, the public hearing's closed and it's.
But the applicant's representative is often allowed to answer questions.
All right, well, let's get through our questions. Ms. Harris.
I did the, thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Bradshaw and Toby. And I would also like to see the residents get together with the builders and have some I would like to see that.
Ms. McFarland.
To go back on the brick, I don't have a necessary concern that we need to find some kind of compromise, that we say, look, 75% masonry is not, you know, acceptable, but generally, when we have a planned development, you know, which in this Hillwood development, we had multifamily in the start, and the reason that we allow the density for multifamily and some of the things that they're doing in the front, there's a trade-off, because in the back, we're having the density in the front, and we're going with a defined product in the back, which in this case, to do the multifamily in the front, the trade-off was to do 75% masonry in the back. You know, in Blackman Farms, I just counted, we have 11 homes that backed up to the existing county subdivision, we have 52 that back up to the existing county subdivision here. So, you know, there's five times the number of homes that are going to be backing up to existing neighborhoods that thought they were going to have 75% masonry homes. So, you know, what we may, and I'm throwing this out there, it may be that we need to look at those homes that back up to the existing neighborhoods and say, we're not changing the restrictions on those, they're going to stay 75% masonry, because that's what those individuals expected, and then inside the perimeter of those other houses, say, you know, let's have a front brick house, or 30 to 40% brick, but some kind of trade-off. So, you know, my main concern, when we have other developers who are going to come up and start looking at what we're doing on existing subdivisions, they're going to point at Hillwood and say, well, you took us from 70, you took Syn-tax Pol-T from 75% all masonry, it's only 20% front brick, so we want you to do that for us, too. So, you know, that's why I think we have to be very delicate on how we address that.
Well, I think I'm hearing some concerns about the masonry, and how the homes will be built, that we want to make separate homeowners associations, leave the existing homeowners' association one, and the new area to be in homeowners association two, that the existing amenities are not quite as promised, and that we're not getting a lot of communication based on that, and there's a real fear that the existing amenities and these, for instance, drainage issues or some other things, which obviously the city can help probably ameliorate those, make some concerns on the part of the council. There may be an instance where we want to defer this so we can get some further information. There may be some other issues that council members have. Mr. Washington, did that bring something to mind?
You said everything I was thinking about, and tells about the drainage. Give me, come on up here.
Where's Mr. Huttsden, when we need him?
Mr. Griffith's right here.
Okay.
He's waiting till the end of the attempt. He gave him up real quick, didn't he?
Ever smooth.
Well, I'm going to vote to defer anyway, so I want to hear what you got to say about somebody.
I was listening with interest about the drainage, and I'm not sure just what it is. The, I think for the most part, the subdivision's in pretty good shape, and if the, I wanted to do an investigation from my staff, we've been aware of a little bit of, some of the offenses, been a little bit of an issue out there. The drainage, I'm not sure what the nature of the problem is, and if these people who have the problems could assist us by reminding us or telling us what it is. If it was to do with the June, excuse me, the May 1 and May 2 event, they're not alone with problems, we had that all over town, that was really an unusual event. However, if it's a very routine occasion, then there is a mistake that we want to know about before that developer gets out of there. We're probably holding some charity on him for his drainage system, surely it's in warranty, so we probably holding some money on him in the form of performance charity or warranty charity to ensure that this is finished up. So if they can contact our planning department, and if you all would, there, if you get that gentleman's name, number, Mr. Griffith's number, you could help us by investigating that a little bit.
Ms. Traylon, I just have a quick question for you, and this is a broader question. I'm sure you and your staff and Ms. Logan dealing with a lot of the planned developments that are already in place, you're dealing with individuals that are wanting to come in and change and look at maybe finding ways to move developments on. How are you handling, or what are you seeing where applicants are coming in and making those changes?
This development's a little different, and I'm going to come back to the difference, but a lot of what we're seeing are people, in many instances, banks or distressed developers who are wanting to sell portions of their developments, usually a section of a larger development. There's multiple sections, and maybe a bank has foreclosed and got back ownership of a section, and they don't want to be the developer, they want to sell it. We're receiving a lot of inquiries for subdivisions, particularly individual sections of those subdivisions that are in those kind of situations. When those kind of inquiries come, I really want to counsel the owners or the sellers that before they come in and make applications, to just take the bottom out of the restrictions or to dramatically change the program, take away all the amenities, that they really need to think long and hard about what they're fixing to do, because I think that there's going to be a lot of pushback on the part of the planning commission and the city council. If there is an existing neighborhood, like several houses are already built in it, I magnify that, because I would point out to them that there are owners who bought into it, that are living there, who have an ownership stake, that bought part of a plan, and now they're going to change the plan, and that kind of change will be very difficult. If it's basically undeveloped, nobody's around it, and it's a blank slate, I'm willing to be a little more permissive in how I counsel them, that they may be those really broader opportunities. This development is a little different in that this is the, a very successful development, the development recipe has been very successful by all indications. Development has remained relatively strong in the Blackman Farms, where our other areas have been distressed. There is not a lot of other land in this, they're not just trying to carve off one section and get rid of it so that they can go on and do something else, they're really looking at adding to the neighborhood they've already started. The original Hillwood had exactly the same number of lots, they're not changing that. They're changing the internal street pattern, but they're not changing the connections to the outside at all. The same connections that were part of the original Hillwood are still here. They are consolidating their green space, their amenity areas, in the one large space. And as we discussed, the recreation area, lots of times, the small ones that are in people's backyards are not very accessible to the neighborhood. This is going to have a ring of lots all the way around it, which will add a very, very visible green space that will be a bit in the neighborhood. Often, we've had concerns about does green areas not being large enough for people to have things like soccer games or football games, impromptu sports, frisbee or whatever. This area will have that, and it should, and it is intended to be developed, and we're going to be looking for it when we review the preliminary plan and site plans, for them to be provenant for those type of, what I call semi-active recreation. It may be an organized sports, or it may be an impromptu game, but those kind of areas are real nice to have. This area will be very visible to the public. So rather than being in somebody's backyard where it may be prone to be neglected, this area's going to be in front of a lot of houses, where there'll be a lot of eyes able to make sure that the ball's not dropped. Listening to these people and talking about the covenants, one thing I want to kind of reflect on just real quickly, and we, I'm sensitive, you all want to defer action, but I want to have some communication with these people. When this was set up, I think we wanted to see a third-party management who would enforce the covenants. What we feared is, when we have these owners associations, where the owners are all friends, they'll let their friends do things that they might not have let other areas, and maybe exercise poor judgment when that happens. But when you have that third-party management come in, Gertner, they drive through, and if everybody's got a flower that's too high, everybody gets a ticket, and summons the quarter to do something about it. Nobody, the third-party management is usually very strict, but very uniform. They don't play favorites, there are no favorites in eyes of the third-party management. And sometimes that's a little bit, that shapes people sometimes, because they just don't quite like that regimen of control. That was something we expected with this development, because that was one of the features, the third-party management. But I am sensitive about this issue of the board being able to hire its third-party management company, and they, the owners' association needs to have that authority, that's why I'd be hiring it. And I'm inclined to agree with this idea of maybe having, at the red line there on the map, being two, because I think that the people in Blackman Farms expected Blackman Farms would someday be concluded. The people in Blackman Farms, too, will have an opportunity to control their destiny, possibly independently. I want to say that with one caveat, I want to leave this for the people who may be listening, there are a lot of amenities in section one. There's the Boulevard, and there's a traffic circle and all that landscaping, and they get the opportunity to pay for it. It's their association thing. And if it were structured right, this second annex, the people who live there might have an opportunity to share within that cost, but if they don't want that contribution from their new neighbors, that might be their decision.
That's something I thought about. You might want to, you know, do what Mr. Gilli said about co-mingle the funds all into one pot as well, I don't know if that's possible, do that.
I think what I'm going to advocate, and if you all defer action, this is what I will counsel the developer we should do, is really try to have a neighborhood meeting to see if we can get some of these people who have some gripes towards that issue, maybe to sit down and discuss this, because they may see that there can be a common ground that will work out for the best for both sides. I think that the developers can develop a very nice neighborhood. I'm very proud of Blackman Farms. I drive through there, and I find a lot of uniqueness, and it's something that although it's economical in some respects, it's also a nice neighborhood, and it's developing that neighborhood feel. And I sense that from the people who came tonight. I didn't, I detect that there's people who have a neighborhood feel that are speaking, and that's what we want in our neighborhoods. We don't want a subdivision of strangers.
Ms. Traylon, one question, Mayor, please.
Vice Mayor.
Ms. Traylon, I want to go back, because I know that we have some streets that are connecting to Braxton Bragg, and then I think over to Miranda Drive, that eventually leads over, I think, to Gresham Lane.
Yes, sir.
And I know all of those streets are pretty narrow and pretty substandard. Do we ever look at any kind of off-site improvements? I know that a lot of times other people do, that we're, have we got a traffic study, we know which way the people are going to go out of this community, and they're all not going to go out on Highway 96 probably, or maybe out Blaze Drive to Fortress, but we're putting them out on county roads that are substandard?
I sincerely expect that we won't be dumping as much traffic onto the county roads that are substandard as we will be having people come into these streets. Blaze Drive and the street Almanor Knot are a straight shot to the Fortress Boulevard and to the Blackman School complex, and I think that people will find a very attractive route, probably much more so than going the back roads to the county subdivision. We wanted these.
Unless you don't have a kid, you're taking the scare.
Well, and I don't have any out there, but we wanted these streets connected, in large part for emergency response and utility extensions, the, you're very much aware of our policy to see streets extended, and these streets also deadened into it. If these streets didn't deaden into the track, it wouldn't be an issue. There's, Braxton Bragg goes back out to Gresham Lane, Gresham Lane is really the street that would be most impacted. Um, there's, Braxton Bragg goes back out to Gresham Lane. Gresham Lane is really the street that would be most impacted. I think that in the, in the long term, we, we're just gonna have to look at a reconstruction of that. Of course, that area is involved in a litigation area, involving that annexation. When that will be concluded, I don't know. But then, um, when that's concluded, we're probably looking at whether we do that right.
Well, Gresham Lane, I think, is the road itself, as it is in the city, I believe.
Y- yes, sir. The, uh, the street roadbed is, but the, uh, western side is not.
Correct.
All right, Mr. Washington?
And I can, uh, concur with what Chris is talking about, Vice Mayor Braxton, but now, you know, being with Muntz's electoral utility company, we all, we love connections, and, uh, um, Chris, those roads, you know, they will eventually someone on the road, be a three-lane probably with a turn-in lane in the middle, and, and that's just the way it is. I mean, I don't know how the annexation situation's gonna come out, but the bottom line is, um, that's what's gonna happen. So, uh, it makes sense, you know, we have that, that agreement with, with us, MED, and the city about the, uh, urban boundary, growth boundary, and, uh, that's the way we need to be thinking, you know, that's, that's, that's where we're going, and, and, um,
I, I agree-
It is what it is, bro.
I agree with that a hundred percent, but sometimes, you know, you know, somebody's gonna have to pay for that future three-lane road, somebody's wanting to pay for those future connections. And if this, if this the product of a development, sometimes you require off-site repairs from the developer to pay for it instead of asking the taxpayer to pay for it.
We need to get the developer to pay as much as he can, as far as escrow and how would we do it, but in our mindset, we need to understand, this is where we're going. And, uh, we can get as much out of the developer, and, and I'm still gonna vote to defer, and, um, that's my motion.
So you're moving to defer, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, and I'm hearing, second, we have a second. Uh, I'm hearing masonry, the, the homeowner's agreements, and how they possibly could be divided, the existing amenities, and whether they're being, uh, taken care of, communications, obviously, and an escrow account at some point to, uh, look at roads, uh, in that particular area. Those are just mentionables?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? There may be other things council members have, if you would like to speak directly to Mr. Adelot regarding those, I think that would be fine, and we have two planning commission members on the council, so you have Mr. Gillie and Mr. Young both that you could share concerns with. Anything else? You have a motion and second to defer. Any questions on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Braxton?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on May 13th, 2010, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending Appendix A Zoning Chart 1 pertaining to zoning uses in General Office OG and General Office Residential OGR districts to add additional usage as a matter of right and by special use permits. City of Murfreesboro Planning Staff is the applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the May 30th, 2010 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely?
Good evening, thank you. Um, let me get ready here. The next public hearing is to consider some amendments to our zoning ordinance, and actually, the next four public hearings are all related. But before I get into the details of the, uh, public hearing, I'd like to give you some background information. Um, and at the end of last year, 2009, planning staff initiated an effort to begin studying the medical zones in the city of Murfreesboro, and to study our zoning ordinance as it applies to medical zones. In the city of Murfreesboro, we have three medical zones, there's CM, which is Medical Commercial District, CMR, which is Medical Commercial District Residential, and CMRS8, which is Medical District Commercial, uh, Single Family District. And these three zones are concentrated primarily around existing Middleton City Medical Center campus, located just off of North Highland Avenue. As I know that you're all aware, that the Middleton City MTMC, as I'll call it from this point forward, will be moving its main campus location from downtown, or downtown, to Medical Center Parkway. As a matter of fact, you've probably read in the paper that a couple days ago, the Medical Center got its certificate of occupancy, and it got that a couple days early, so it will have the ability to begin moving operations, and the plan has been to begin moving operations in July to the new site, having, and planning on having the new hospital open and operational in October. So with this impending move of the, uh, hospital, the, the, some full-toom property around existing campus and along North Highland, Dow Street, and East Clark Boulevard, have contacted myself, Mr. Adelot, and my coworkers with some concerns that they have about their office buildings. They have some developed property with office space, and the current medical district permits, um, offices, but only medical or dental-related offices, not general types of offices, and also they permit residential uses, and these property owners are finding it difficult to lease their properties, because the tenants that typically, um, and historically have leased their properties have wanted to be located near the hospital. Now they've had, um, I guess, their supply of tenants are looking to move, um, with the hospital. So we've listened to them, we've heard them, and we, uh, brought to the planning commission the concerns that we've received from these property owners. Planning Commission directed the planning staff to study the area, and, um, I did so, and I included in your agenda materials, uh, a staff report of the existing medical zones in Murfreesboro, and, um, and, but, planning staff wanted to make sure to get, make sure that we had a concerted effort to get as much public input before making any recommendations. So as part of that public input process, staff held a neighborhood meeting on March the 9th, which I saw some of you in attendance of, at the Patterson Park Community Center. To advertise that meeting, we put some signs in the areas of interest. We placed notice in the paper, we placed notice on our website. Um, Mr. Adelot did an interview on WGNS on the radio. We also, um, advertised on Channel 3, our cable Channel 3. And I did see some independent news articles about the study. Also, um, I created a website on murfreesboro-tan.gov slash planning, where anybody interested in the process or the study could go to that page, and it could download the study, maps, a brochure that we prepared. I also included the brochure in your agenda materials, just to see what we passed out, trying to get the word out. And, um, get additional information, they also had the opportunity to submit comments directly to staff through the website. Also, at the public, at the public meeting at Patterson Park, we provided some, um, an opportunity for people to provide written comments to us as well. So after an extensive and concerted effort to get as much public input as possible, the planning commission has come up with some recommendations, and that'll be the subject of this public hearing and the next three public hearings. So I did include in your agenda materials, uh, I guess just a cover memo, with the, uh, medical zone study, the brochure that we prepared, and some written comments that were submitted to the planning department. The first of the, uh, proposed changes is a zoning ordinance amendment to amend our Chart 1 Uses Permitted, uh, chart. And this is done, or this is done in anticipation of rezoning some of the CMR and CMRS8 properties to OGR. Currently, um, the, the, uh, existing zoning does not allow general types offices, but the conversations we've had with a lot of property owners are that there are people who maybe have an engineering office or a real estate office that would like to lease their space, their existing office space, but the zoning would not permit that. So the proposed changes that planning commission has come up with are to add uses to the OG and OGR zones that currently are not permitted in the OG, OGR zones, but are permitted in the CMR and CM zones. And the uses that we are, that the planning commission is proposing to add to the OG and OGR zones are as follows. College University, that's one use, a hospital, mental health facility, nursing home, antique shops less than 3,000 square feet, apothecaries, pharmaceuticals only, book or card shop, catering establishment, health club, optical dispensary, pharmacies, reducing and weight control services, and medical laboratories. And permitted as a special use permit, the planning commission is recommending that you add a group assembly of less than 250 persons, and group assembly with more than 250 persons be permitted in OG and OGR zones with a special use permit, which means they have to get approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. If these are approved and these uses are added to the OG and OGR zones, then the uses that are currently permitted will continue to be permitted in these same areas. Um, I will let you know that in addition to the four public hearings that we have tonight, I know that, um, there'll be an additional area that will come before you next month. Also, the planning commission has scheduled a public hearing on July 21st at 7:00 PM, that Wednesday night, the 3rd Wednesday in July, to consider amending the zoning ordinance as regards tea rooms. And the reason I bring that up is during our public hearing, during, uh, the planning commission public hearing, we had someone interested in adding tea rooms as a permitted use in these areas. They felt that it would be appropriate to have maybe bed and breakfasts and tea rooms in these maybe houses that are in the area. So staff heard them, planning commission asked us to, uh, do some research. We've done some research, and we'll bring that to planning commission in July. And I know Mr. Gillie is especially interested in that, because I think he's the one who, um, asked me to do the research, and so I wanna let you know about that meeting next month. So this public hearing is to consider, uh, adding the uses that I mentioned to the Uses Permitted chart, Chart 1 in the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, and Mr. Adelot is available too, if you prefer.
Any questions for Ms. Ely before I open the public hearing?
Not a question, Mayor, but I would like to thank Margaret Ann for all the hard work that she has put into what we've got coming up tonight, and, um, the, the hard work she's put into coming up with the proposal regarding the tea room addition. And I think, while that's one small, particular use, what I think that does show to the public is that the planning commission, as well as staff, is really looking hard at thinking outside the box as to how this area can redevelop to, to its highest and best potential, and, and looking at and being open to ideas that the public brings to us for that area.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no further comments or questions, I'll open a public hearing at this time, and we will consider amending Appendix A Zoning Chart 1, which is pertaining to zoning uses in General Office OG and General Office Residential districts. Anyone wishing to speak, for or against? Please give us your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Wayne Belt. I live at 1410 Broadlands Drive in Murfreesboro. Council members, nice to be with you. I'm here to speak in favor of this proposed zoning change. Over 20 years ago, my partner, Dan Decker, and I developed the Lice Phase of Highland Park Subdivision. We bought the Lice 5 acres from John Sharon that was at the end of Dow Street, and put in the street and developed what later became, and there's many, uh, offices over there now. Uh, Rick Rogers was originally there, where Dr. Saxena is there. Uh, we built an office condominium that had six offices in it. Most of those are owner-occupied, uh, and even though I've sold my property over there, I still serve on the board of the Condominium Association at Doctors Pavilion. And each of those owners all had a concern, uh, about, uh, what was going on. I actually approached Mr. Adelot over six years ago, that, uh, I felt like that the CMR zoning was outdated. Compared to everything that was going on, it was good at the time and place it was done, but, uh, there were people that were having vacancies and, and, uh, needed some probably relief. Later, when the hospital decided to relocate, it became evident that a new zoning, more in line with today's standards, would be both beneficial to the neighbors and to the property owners. I've seen many public hearings and know the neighbors have great concerns over in the Northfield area, uh, but I know many of the people that have their offices there, their medical offices. Christie Houston happens to also be over there, uh, but it's a wonderful neighborhood. So, uh, today, as you go all over town, it's interesting how things change, but it's certainly not unusual to see medical and office general existing side to side. If you go down Memorial and you think about, uh, between Memorial and Northfield Boulevard, all the offices down there, between the banks where Dr. Rans and, where there's insurance offices, and there used to be the Social Security offices down there, but you see cohabitation between a lot of varying businesses, and they complement one another. As you go on out by where Bob Parf's office is, on that end of Northfield, you see office condominiums that has many different offices. It includes lawyers, it includes beauticians, it includes engineers, uh, and, uh, real estate offices and many things like that. So, uh, you can also go into town, to Belmont Park, Jefferson Square, they all have mixed uses. They all blend together well, and they all make good neighbors. So, uh, the meeting on March the 9th was just, uh, so excellent. Uh, I commend the staff, and Margaret Ann did a wonderful job. There was so much information there for anyone that had an interest to get the big picture. It's hard to get the big picture of how area, how big an area around the hospital and Highland and Dow Street and Clark and all of that is. There's, there's, and this can have a dramatic economic impact if something like this doesn't happen, because potentially, there'll be vacancies. Interestingly enough, at Doctors Pavilion, most of those doctors plan on staying there. Everybody's not gonna go out to the medical zone. But when there are vacancies, and you see a lot of signs over there, having flexibility in being able to use things for many different uses would really be an excellent idea. Uh, the, uh, time for CMR zoning is past, and we need to move forward, need to protect all the property owners. I really view this, uh, OG and, uh, zoning as being something that will be extremely helpful to the neighbors that live in the residences around there. The one thing we wouldn't wanna have in that area is a lot of vacant offices, and because of zoning, they couldn't be rented. So to have tenants, have people that keep their property up will be a, uh, wonderful, uh, opportunity there. So thank you for having such a good staff that does an excellent job on these things, and thank you for, uh, the forwardness in looking at how we can help protect our property owners and our neighbors with a safe place for all to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Mr. Washington?
I appreciate, uh, Mr. Belt's comments, because, uh, when the hospital moves out to Medical Center Parkway, uh, there's still gonna be a real good need and, and, and need some access for, uh, public health needs in that area. Uh, the mobile health unit, Murfreesboro City Schools is trying to work with, uh, Melty, Melty Medical Center to get that thing up on, if, if it's not already. Um, and I'm real concerned about, uh, vacating that area and, and access to, to healthcare for the folks to live on that side of town and beyond, toward Woodbury. So, uh, Rob, you're on the committee, you're on the committee, and, 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 uh, Pastor McCarron and some folks from First Baptist Church are on the committee, that, uh, I hope that you all really take into consideration, you know, the void that's gonna happen when they move. And, and, and I have all the faith and conscience in, in, uh, Mr. Gordon Ferguson and, and your group, that we will address that and not leave those folks high and dry. There's, um, I got to say.
All right, I'm, I haven't closed the public hearing yet, and I didn't hear your name and address. One, one- But with the council's, uh, agree, it's out, we'll just go on, and now I'll close the public hearing, and thank you for your remarks.
We know where to find them.
Okay. Oh, all right. Consider for passage on first reading ordinance to amend Appendix A Zoning Chart 1 pertaining to zoning uses in General Office OG and General Office Residential OGR districts to add additional uses as a matter of right and by specific use permits, special use permits. Their motion?
So moved? Second.
All right, motion is second. Any further comments? Or questions regarding this reading, uh, first reading ordinance? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Braxton?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Braxton?
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on May 13th, 2010, will now conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning Area 1, approximately 51.8 acres, including 32 parcels south of East Clark Boulevard and along Dow Street, Island Terrace, and North Highland Avenue, from Medical District Residential CMR District to General Office District Residential OGR District. The city of Murfreesboro Planning Staff is the applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the May 30th, 2010 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely, you may continue.
Thank you. Good evening again. The planning commission reckon, or, uh, recognized three areas which they thought would benefit from being rezoned to OGR immediately. As you know, we, uh, the Middleton City Medical Center hasn't, um, sold their property, and the, they're not sure what it'll be used for in the future, so what the planning commission decided to do was find areas that would immediately benefit from, uh, change in zoning. And so what's before you tonight is what we refer to as Area 1. The next public hearing will be for Area 2, and then, and that, the third will be for Area 3. The map that's on the screen now just shows an overall map of Areas 1, 2, and 3, the very next map that I'm going to stop at, shows the area, we call Area 1- shows the area we call Area 1, which is 51.8 acres, and it's located south of East Clark Boulevard, along North Highland Avenue, Dow Street, and Highland Terrace. There are 32 parcels in this area, and they are currently developed with office buildings. The Stonewood Apartments are located on East Clark Boulevard, but the other structures are all medical or office buildings. And there are some vacant properties in this area, and we, there, many of the property owners who approached us do own property in the area. So the Planning Commission has recommended that you rezone this property from its current CMR Medical Commercial Residential District to OGR General Office Residential District. With the change you just approved in the previous public hearing, the uses that are currently permitted will continue to be allowed, and in addition to that, some of the uses that are allowed in the OGR zones, such as general offices. This, of course, the Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously since it was their recommendation to begin with. But if you have any questions about this, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning these properties to OGR.
Questions for Ms. Ely? Before I open the public hearing, anyone? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment to the Murfreesboro City Code, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Dr. Ron Wright. I have a dental office building at 1280 Dow Street. Actually, it was the first office building built on Dow Street 31 years ago. And I just want to speak in favor of this rezoning and commend the, Mr. Adalot, his staff, and the city itself on the foresight of helping protect this area. As some will be leaving, but others of us will be there and plan to be there for a long time. So I just appreciate you all looking with the foresight of doing this in advance of some that would be leaving. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone at all? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezonan area, including 32 parcels south of East Clark Boulevard and along Dow Street, Highland Terrace, and North Highland Avenue to General Office District Residential District.
Mayor, just a note of history, Vice Mayor Bratcher, were you on the Planning Commission when Dr. Wright's building was first approved?
No. I was on here when he was born. Move passage.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Pursuant to resolution adopted by City Council on May 13th, 2010, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning Area 2, approximately 5.2 acres, including three parcels from Medical Residential Single Family 8, CMRS8 District, to General Office Residential OGR District, and 13 parcels from Medical Residential CMR District to General Office Residential OGR District, located west of North Highland Avenue and south of Robert Street. City of Murfreesboro Planning Staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 30th, 2010 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely, you may continue.
Thank you, sir. The next area which Planning Commission has recommended rezoning to OGR is located just south of Robert Street and along North Highland Avenue. The surrounding zoning to the north is CMRS8. To the west and south is CMR, and to the east is RS10. But that RS10 zone property is the Evergreen Cemetery, so I don't expect that it'll be developed anytime in the future. There are three parcels that are currently zoned, CMRS8 in the study area, and those are the three parcels located south of Robert Street. The remaining parcels to the south are zoned CMR. So the Planning Commission is recommending that you rezone all 16 parcels from their current zone to OGR General Office Residential District. Most of these properties have medical buildings, but there are some old houses located in the area. If there's a single-family residential structure currently existing with the proposed zoning, it will continue to be permitted. There'll be no change, they won't need any sort of brand fathering because that's a permitted use in the OGR zone. But if they'd like to redevelop with some general office buildings, then that would also be something that they could do. So Planning Commission has recommended that you rezone these properties to CMR. You have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them whenever you have them.
Any questions for Ms. Ely? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time, and anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning of Area 2, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezonan area, including three parcels to General Office Residential OGR District, and 13 parcels to General Office Residential OGR District, located west of North Highland Avenue and south of Robert Street.
May for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by the City Council on May 13th, 2010, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning Area 3, approximately 8.5 acres, including 29 parcels located west of North Highland Avenue and along Lee Street, North Manny Avenue, Bell Street, and East Burton Street, from Medical District Residential CMR District to General Office District Residential OGR District. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 30th, 2010 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely, you may continue.
Thank you. Mayor Bragg, this is Area 3. Area 3 consists of 29 parcels, and it's located along Lee Street, along North Manny Avenue. And it mainly consists of offices and single-family residences. Many of the parcels are under one ownership. Dr. Talbert owns many of the properties that are shaded in blue here. All these parcels are currently zoned CMR, and the proposed zone is to OGR General Office Residential District. That would permit medical offices, general offices, and residential uses in the area. The Planning Commission has recommended that this area be, this area known as Area 3, be rezoned to OGR. If you have any questions about that recommendation, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Ely at this time? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezonan area, including 29 parcels, located west of North Highland Avenue and along Lee Street, North Manny Avenue, Bell Street, and East Burton Street to General Office District Residential OGR District.
Move his passage, second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. I commend the planning staff and their efforts, including all of the preparation and certainly the continued work that they'll be doing in that area. And thank you, Ms. Ely, for being succinct in presenting all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg.
Thank you. Consider recommendations of the Transportation Director with regards to the CCTV and traffic signal interconnect project. Mr. Richardson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bragg, members of council. I do just have that one item this evening for your consideration. We recently received bids for our CCTV expansion project and reconstruction project of our existing infield cameras, as well as the project consisting of interconnecting several more of our traffic signals along our arterial routes with the expansion of our city. We did receive four bids. One bid was received late, and it was returned unopened. But out of the four bids that we received, the low bid was submitted by Stansel Electric Company in the amount of $848,416.75. And based on recommendation of our engineering firm, Ben Wiser Company, and the concurrence of T-DOT, we'd recommend award of low bid to Stansel Electric in that amount. And this is a 100% American Recovery and Reinvestment Act or stimulus-funded grant. And we would ask that you approve this, subject to the approval of ultimately the contract by our league department.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Richardson regarding his recommendation?
Move your approval recommendation, second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Are there any beer permits?
No, sir, none tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. You have before you a list of payments, of statements to be paid. Are there any questions regarding those statements to be considered payment? Now's a good time to answer those. If not, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. I'd like to recommend a forward appointment of a loadie of bats to our disciplinary review board to replace Ms. Harris, who has taken another job with the city.
I want my job back.
Move your approval recommendation to Mayor?
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Is there any other business from staff or council to come before the council? Let me mention that International Folk Fest is this week. We'll have events starting tomorrow. I think at the senior center, some dancers will be there, and we'll probably have dancers for a little while around here, and that'll be pretty exciting. I want to commend council members Harris and Washington for attending the Bradable Road Community Meeting, and appreciate the efforts of our police chief and their staff in the outstanding job of representing the city at that meeting. And certainly, I'm sure we'll hear more about that and those efforts also. I believe that's all that I have. Anyone have anything else they'd like to comment on? Surely there's an update on the middle half?
No, we found a new starter this year.
No way.
I think Mayor Burgess is going to take care of that for us.
Well, he may be part of the hearing already.
All joking aside, I think council, our city manager Lyons can tell you this, that there have been a lot of families who participated in not only Optimus, but NBA baseball, and one-goal soccer, and MSC soccer, and their seasons are now winding down. So to our park staff and all the families who participated in those this, this spring, and now we're winding it down to summer. It's been a fantastic season. So job well done to all the city staff.
That is a good question. Our Memorial Day pool, how's that coming along?
They are making progress. We are hoping that the outdoor pool will be open the last week of June, so.
Before 4th of July?